Thank you. Good evening, welcome to the November eighteenth special meeting of the Merrimack School Board. Please join me in rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I'd like to say that Board Member Roth House has had some work commitments and she will be here. She's just going to be a little late, so she will come in and join when she arrives. Public participation.
Is your microphone on?
It is.
Can you?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. I'll try to talk. There we go, that's better. I don't have a very loud voice, so it'd be tough. So first, we'll go through the drill. Public comments, we do allow them temporarily. Emails can be sent to publiccomment@sa26.org. The interesting thing about the public comments is we'll do what we've done in the last several meetings. We'll rotate between here in person and public comments here. We do have a large number of public comments right now. What I would like to do, I think we're going to commit to getting through those comments. And anybody that wants to speak, we have some time allowed at the beginning and we're going to state a schedule. So we've got a half an hour, but we will stay afterwards for anyone else that has public comments and to finish the comments that we have in the mailbox. But I would like Shannon, you to just put a marker on the last one that came in because if we get another thirty or forty, it's just going to be too much and I apologize in advance. We will put those other ones with our minutes, but for the sake of everyone's time. And you know, to be honest, I think we can all agree, there's only so long we can talk about masks on either side and you know, hours and hours for sure, but we do want to hear from you. You know, most importantly, we're all neighbors. We love this town. We live here for a reason. We have communities. And you know, I think first and foremost, remember that even those of, you know, those of us up here, we're also community members. We love this community as well. And certainly, you know, these are challenging times with a lot of, there's a lot of polarizing issues right now. This is a business meeting, so I just ask that you don't speak out of turn and interrupt people while they are speaking. If this happens, I may have to ask you to leave. I really do not ever want to have to do that, but I will if necessary. Most importantly, I would say be respectful in your comments, again, just keeping in mind that we are neighbors. We are all humans. We may not agree on everything. We may not agree on this issue, but the one next week, we might. So just keep that in mind. When residents do come to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record. If you are a student, we just ask you to state that you are a student in your first name only. We will, we have no need for your address. No swearing. We also have time allocated, again, at the end. We have the certain, I'm sorry, we have a certain amount of time allocated for public comments and I'm probably, because this is going a little longer, I'll probably let that push a few minutes just to make sure that you get, the public gets the full time. And so at that point, we will break and we will move into the business portion of our meeting until we open up public comments again at the end. And lastly, we will just not allow any public disparagement of any of our district employees or our school board members. If any comments appear to cross the line, I will ask you to step away from the microphone. And I think we're all set. So what we'll do is we'll start right up here up front. I thank you all for coming tonight and state your name and address for the record. And once you're finished, one other thing I wanted to say is the more brief that you can be with your comments, the more people are, the more people will be able to have a chance to speak, particularly in this first section of the meeting. But once you're finished, we'll move to online and we'll go back and forth. And if you can queue up, that will allow us to keep it going more quickly. So I will turn it over to you. Thank you.
Good evening, Jennifer Jobin, Merrimack Meeting Drive. Members of the school board, thank you for your service to our community. I know that it's a difficult time to serve on the school board, not just in our town, but across the country, school board members are bearing the brunt of people's frustrations. So please know that you're supported and appreciated by many here. I hope others in our community will echo these sentiments and treat you with respect during tonight's meeting. So the reason we're here tonight. The explosion of COVID cases among Merrimack students this week is alarming. It is time to pause the option to opt out of the mask mandate to slow the spread within our schools. Under the page titled Guidance for COVID-19 Prevention in K-12 Schools on the CDC website updated November fifth, it states, "Due to the circulating and high contagious Delta variant, CDC recommends universal indoor masking by all students aged two and older, staff, teachers, and visitors to K-12 schools regardless of vaccination status." It is time for Merrimack to follow CDC guidance. As school board members, you have a duty to enact policy that protects the students and staff of our schools. We all have a duty to what, to do what we can to reduce the risk to our community as a whole. As we approach Thanksgiving and winter holidays, we all want to be able to spend time safely with our extended families. With cases rising among our students, the risk of spreading COVID to vulnerable family members such as grandparents also increases. How much risk are you willing to take with the health of our students and their families? You can't prevent all cases, but we should listen to the experts who tell us that masks are a tool we have that mitigates the risk of spreading COVID-19. Personally, my biggest concern is ensuring that my child can continue to attend school in person. She has asthma and on the recommendation of her doctor, she attended school remotely for more than half of the last school year, until it became suddenly apparent that the toll, that the toll that isolation was taking on her mental health. This school year, back with her peers in person at the middle school, she is thriving. She is participating in multiple extracurricular activities that have thankfully returned to in-person as well. I do not want her to have to return to remote learning, or worse, to be isolated in quarantine due to exposure to COVID-19 at school. As parents, we shouldn't have to decide between our child's physical or mental health. In closing, I urge you to listen to those of us who present calm, reasoned, fact-based messages and not those that simply scream the loudest and use intimidation methods to sway your opinion. Thank you.
Shannon?
Next is from Lisa Mongovan, fourteen Lamson Drive. Dear school board members, I would like to encourage all of you to vote for a mask mandate in our school district. Cases arising in every school, if our schools had an eighty percent vaccination rate, I would not see the need to, for a mandate. But every health expert on the planet has said the first line of defense to COVID-19 is vaccination. Second comes distancing, which schools cannot do, and masking. This mitigation practice is detrimental to student health and safety. I am thankful my eleven-year-old and nine-year-old have received their first vaccination doses, but they are still vulnerable. My four-year-old, who attends preschool in the district, is still vulnerable. As an adult past six months post-second vaccination dose and ineligible for a booster, I am now vulnerable too. Immunity is potentially waning with the vaccines, as in Massachusetts, breakthrough cases are up by forty-four percent. As cold weather has settled into New Hampshire for these upcoming months, children will be inside more during school as illnesses circulate and now is the time to implement better strategies. As a district, we can do better. Please do better. Lisa Mongovan.
All right, next please.
Sarah Locke, Coda Road. I'm so glad to be back here having the very same conversation that we've been having for the past few months. The difference this time is that COVID transmission keeps multiplying. Right now, it's at the same rate comparable to last winter, but the difference is last winter, we had a remote option for the kids. We don't have that this year. I know everybody's goal is to keep the kids in school, so we need to do that. I want you all to know that I deeply appreciate the work you do as members of the school board. It's not easy. It's not well compensated. It takes a ton of your time and I'm sure it leaves you all stressed out much more than you would prefer to be this year. You're rarely appreciated and lately it also puts a target on your mat, on your back, making you vulnerable to merciless intimidation attempts and bullying here and at your own homes. Please don't allow that to make you forget your responsibility as the school board members. You have the power and the responsibility to keep our children safe. You have the power and the responsibility to keep our children in school. You have the power and the responsibility to keep the district staff and faculty safe. More importantly, you have the responsibility to do this, to do your job regardless of the intimidation that you're facing. If you fail to do your job, you'll be responsible for risking the health and safety of our children. If you fail to do your job, you'll be responsible for risking the health and safety of our families. If you fail to do your job, you'll be responsible for risking the health and safety of our district staff and faculty. If you fail to do your job, you'll be responsible for risking our schools being forced to close again. If you fail to do your job, you'll be responsible for allowing the very loud minority to continue intimidating you and others because you're showing them that's how to get their way. I believe you all can and you will take that responsibility to heart.
All right, Shannon?
Next is from Sheri Kurian, five Portside Drive. I first want to thank all of you for your service to our community and can't possibly understand how hard the decisions you make are, knowing you will never make everyone happy. I can only hope you continue to always think of the kids first and do what is right instead of trying to win over groups of people on either side. I know that you are considering taking the parent opt-out of masking away. As cases are getting out of control, I completely understand why you would do that. However, I was hoping you would consider a different opt-out that is for children who are fully vaccinated. My kids are five and eight and attend TFS, Thorntons Ferry School, and like most kids their age, they need some sort of motivation to do just about anything. I've been telling my kids leading up to their vaccination appointment that when they are fully vaccinated, they will no longer have to wear masks in their classroom, which have been, they, which have been very excited about. I agree that kids who are not vaccinated should continue to be masked, but why not reward the kids who are making the sacrifice and doing their part for the community by allowing them to decide whether or not to wear a mask in class? This also aligns with the data since most of the cases have been in the elementary school where kids have not been eligible to get vaccinated until recently. On another note, I want to thank the district for all the focus on reading this year. TFS had started using Hegarty and I get so excited to read Julie's weekly Hawkes Happenings, which gives us updates on the use of this program in class, among lots of other great things going on in the school this year. I'm so happy for my kindergartner to get such a great program from the get-go. My third grader, who gets extra reading services, will also benefit greatly from this program. I love that we are now trying everything we can to get them off to a great start with reading to prevent the need for extra help in the future, which can also affect their other subjects greatly. Finally, I want to thank you for approving the half-day in March for the teachers to get the Think Kids Collaboration Protective Training. As a parent of a child with challenging behaviors due to ODD, ADHD, and ASD, I'm so happy to see a focus on improving how we can better help and manage challenging behavior in the school and classroom. This will help these kids tremendously and benefit the teachers and the classrooms in the long run too. With all of these amazing new programs and trainings, you are helping to make Merrimack a great place for all kids, not just the natural learners, and I can't thank you enough for that. Appreciatively, Sheri Kurian.
Okay, you're up.
Sheena DeBork, Belmont Drive. As the New York Times reported, Dr. Jennifer Nuzzo, an epidemiologist at John Hopkins, was asked when the pandemic would end and she said, and I quote, "It doesn't end, we just stop caring." Or we care a lot less. For most people, it just fades into the background of their lives, end quote. The pandemic is over. It's been over. I still don't know why we're even looking at the number of cases. It's time to stop the fear mongering and treating our children as though they are dirty little vectors of disease. For as long as I've been alive, we've never made our children constantly wear masks to prevent spreading a cold or the flu, and the flu is much more dangerous to children than COVID-19. And the flu is making a comeback. At the University of Michigan, they're in the midst of an outbreak right now and they have a very strict mask policy. We've never before as a society been so fearful of catching a virus, which has ridiculously high survival rates, especially for children. I've heard people state that kids don't mind wearing masks, but that doesn't mean it's good for them. What are we doing to our kids? The youngest can't read. They're impacted when learning to read. They can't read facial cues. By wearing a mask for thirty-five hours plus a week, they're losing the ability to connect with each other. What better way to support bullying than keeping our kids from seeing their humanity? There's nothing offensive, wrong, or dangerous about the bare human face. COVID is a virus and it's never going away. Never before, to my knowledge, has society ever placed the responsibility to not be sick on someone else. COVID has been turned into a moral failing. At the Monday meeting, someone emailed that their daughter was exposed to a child who had opted out of the mask mandate and blamed the child and his or her parents for getting her child sick. Would you feel better if that child had been wearing a mask and still spread it? Because that's the right thing to do? Again, COVID is never going away and you do not have the right to not get sick. I would like people to ask themselves if they would have been this upset in 2019 if their kid had come home sick with the flu. I was also, wanted to mention that that parent dated her other child then had to quarantine for twenty days and I agree with her that that's completely outrageous, unacceptable. They don't have access to Zoom, I've heard, and this needs to be remedied immediately. So let's look at the numbers, because the high school, middle school, upper elementary, they've not made huge jumps. It's all been in the elementary schools, so what is different there? Can we look at that? Wrap it up, I'm sorry. I think it's important to note that by removing the opt-out option for families to choose whether to have their child use a medical device all day long, you are choosing to sacrifice children to satisfy the irrational anxieties of middle-aged adults. And I don't fault these adults, these adults for having these anxieties. They've been tricked into believing that death lurks around every corner, but we don't make decisions based on fears. You're also making the claim that we as parents have no authority to make medical decisions for our children, so I ask what's next? When do you choose to require an experimental therapeutic treatment like the vaccine to be given to our children so they can attend school? I've heard people say, if it saves one life, if you want to save a life, never ever get in the car, don't go on the rides at the amusement parks, don't hike, don't swim, don't ride a horse, never take any kind of risk, and never, ever, ever leave your house. Thank you.
So I'm going to, if you wouldn't mind, there are a couple of people that sent letters by looking at them and you're the next one on the list?
Back to back.
So I would say, would you like to speak for yourself?
You could just put it in the record. That's fine.
Okay, so I will go on and Kathy, you are next on that list, so are you also planning to speak?
You can read it.
You want me to read it? Okay, thank you. So the next is from Kathy Kilmar, Belmont Drive. Good morning once again. I'm writing to say, mask if you want, but leave the rest of us alone. They don't work. They give you a false sense of security and you all know this. One study says they work, the next study says they don't, even Fauci. I think you're, fraud, you're, you're using, I know you're saying fraud she did use names.
Again, can we keep comments?
Right. Can't make up his mind. Please step off this merry-go-round and let parents make their best decisions for our children. We are tired of the games and do not, will do what is best for our families while allowing others to do for theirs. Please stop this never-ending cycle and let people live their lives with the God-given freedom we all have. If you choose to live in fear, so be it, but we will not. Thank you, Kathy Kilmar.
Okay, next.
Bill Finkston, seventeen Jessica Drive. And I'd like to start off in addition saying, if anyone's intimidating you guys, please call the cops because that's not right. I don't think I've ever seen it, but that's on you guys. You do the right thing. But I am here tonight to be a voice for other parents who are home with their children and cannot be here. I'm voice, I'm a, I am a voice, let me start all over again. I'm a voice for the children who cannot speak here. Apparently, I'm one of them. And I'm a voice for those concerned citizens, parents, aunts, uncles, and grandparents who are afraid to have a tag added to their name and be labeled a domestic terrorist by agencies and departments who fear those who are willing to stand up and reject the government's overreach, gross overreach, or for trying to raise our children. When I first spoke to the board a while back, I mentioned the fact that you're all elected officials. Elected officials in a position to listen to those who live in this town and implement their will into the way we, Merrimack, educate our children. When I stated that, it was met with an eye roll, a shake of the head, and a smirk. It may be too late for some of you to understand or appreciate, but for those of you who do understand, please hear this. Your votes, your votes tonight do have consequences. People will forget when you vote to allocate X amount of dollars for a parking lot, X amount of dollars for a gym floor, or prove a salary for a position that they don't feel is justified. But what people don't forget is when your vote hurts their loved ones, their blood, and their family. Merrimack's current mask policy, although not perfect, is damn close. It allows those who place their faith and trust in a fabric cloth to do so, while also allowing those who object to opt out. The COVID numbers in the school system are no different than the numbers in the everyday New Hampshire. In fact, they're better. Requiring a piece of fabric over a young developing face will not alter any trend. I'll leave you with this. The recent elections, the recent elections in Virginia and more, even more so in New Jersey, should scream to you that your vote tonight will be remembered in 2022 and 2024. The way you vote tonight may just spur an individual watching on TV, sitting in this room, or speaking right now to run for the school board position, which will allow the school board committee to better be a voice and represent concerned parents in Merrimack. When you vote tonight, I ask you to remain with the current policy. It's working and more importantly, it's fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon?
Next is Becky Dollrimple, one Hitching Post Lane. I'm writing tonight to ask, to ask please, while numbers are rising, refresh air becomes limited and vaccines just becoming available, that you consider mandating masks. For the parent who did not want masks, we had, have had the opt-out option for two and a half months now and have suffered the consequences numbers rising. Vaccines have just become available to those who want to take the step to protect their children. Please give us some time to protect our children. People around the holidays will be out with family and friends in large groups, which data shows will increase numbers even more. We also have the flu season upon us, so not only will it help with the COVID-rising numbers, but will also, hopefully also, slow down the spread of other sicknesses and allow the children to stay in school. Becky Dollrimple.
Okay, you're up.
Good evening. First, let me say, I'm vaccinated.
We need your name and address for the record.
Oh, sorry, Andrew Morris, Horseshoe Pond. I'm vaccinated. I'm a believer in vaccines. And before I was accepted to school, I was sent a letter by my university telling me that before I could live on campus, I had to have my A, B, and C vaccines. I chose to get them. It seemed the obvious choice. So I'm a believer in vaccines and I think everyone here does have a choice. But the one question I'd like the board to consider is, how long do we want to do this? Because COVID-19 is not polio. No amount of vaccinating or masking is going to make it go away. It's part of our new normal. And I guarantee you here and now that five years from now, there will be some significant number of COVID-19 cases in New Hampshire. It's not going away. So the question for the board to consider is, how long do we want kids to feel like they don't live in a normal world? Because this is the new normal world. And again, no amount of masking, no amount of vaccinations is going to change that. A COVID-19 vaccine does not guarantee you will not get COVID-19. It simply makes it less likely and more likely that you will defeat it without serious consequences. This is our new normal. So I'd like the board to consider, how long do we want to feel abnormal? Because that's what we feel right now. That's it. Thank you.
Shannon?
Next is Melissa Eaton from Carriage Lane. Hello, I have three children in three different schools, Reed's Middle and High School. Having the option to opt my children out of wearing a mask has had such a positive impact on my children this school year. The last year and a half was awful for my kids, with at least one of my children saying they're not going to school this year if they had to wear a mask. He failed most of his classes last year because he gave up and hated being at school. It was a nightmare for him to wear a mask as he has asthma and was struggling to breathe with it on all day. This year, he has turned it around and his grades have improved. I worry that if he's forced to wear a mask, a repeat of last year will happen. I really want this to be a successful year for all of my children. I commend the board for listening to parents' concerns and I have faith in you that you will continue to listen to parents as we know it's best for our children in situation. Melissa Eaton.
Okay, next.
Good evening. My name is Chad Horton, thirty-nine Whittier. My daughter's a freshman at the high school. I just wanted to comment, comment about the mask mandate as well. And this is just my opinion. I'm not a scientist. I'm like everybody else here. I have only the option of looking at the data that we have and trying to evaluate it based on the arguments and based on the data we have. In early April of last year, OSHA issued guidance for respiratory protection for workers exposed to people with the virus. The guidance essentially stated that surgical masks are not respirators and do not provide protection against aerosol generating systems. Nothing about the biology of the virus has changed since last year. A virus is still a virus. The viral molecule is approximately one hundred nanometers wide. Surgical mask filtration is about three thousand nanometers wide. Do the math. It's a one thirtieth the size of the mask filtration. So that's essentially like a screen door on a submarine. And this is to say nothing of cloth masks. This doesn't mean that masks don't provide some level of protection against splashes and droplets, but nearly all of the randomized studies done over the last ten years before this happened around the world have provided inconclusive evidence that masks are effective at preventing the spread of viruses. Several of these studies include trials of medical students or healthcare workers. I can't imagine what hope a high school student has, not in an environment of sterility, when he's going from class to class, going to the bathroom, eating lunch, adjusting their mask, putting it in their pocket, slinging it around their necks, and finally throwing it on the dash of the car at school's end. The data has not changed significantly. The school systems from early on in the pandemic that have been most stringent on masking have had no less cases of COVID, and in some cases, the outbreaks have been worse. Yes, cases are on the rise in New England, but that's to be expected. The Northeast is entering its flu season, while the South, like Florida, are phasing out of their flu season. The good news is that the wealth of accumulated data indicates children, just like they've all said here, are less likely to become infected, less likely to be infectious, less likely to have severe symptoms, and less likely to be hospitalized. Of the seventy-four million children in America, seven hundred and twelve have died from COVID, and most of those had underlying conditions. Compare that to what the CDC estimates, that six hundred and forty-three children, seventeen and under, died from the seasonal flu from 2017 to 2018. As of today, the New Hampshire COVID dashboard records that anybody can go on there and look that no child under nineteen in New Hampshire has died from COVID. Nobody. That same age group does have, account for about two percent of the hospitalizations, though. Kids are at an extremely low risk of severe COVID illness and the risk of dying is nearly nonexistent. And as the psychological harm, as you all know well, or better than I, this stage of their lives is crucial for cultural, language, and social skills. This includes the ability to detect emotion on others' faces. All of the interactions with teachers, friends, parents, and neighbors is integral to their growth and well-being. Covering a child's face mutes the nonverbal forms of communication and can result in robotic and emotionless interactions and cause anxiety and depression. My own freshman daughter says that masks are distracting and cause her to lose focus. My guess is that many of the other students feel the same way. So I guess my hope is that can we please just not act reflexively based on fear of COVID and institute another round of needless masking that will almost certainly do nothing to stop a virus that will always be with us? I'm asking you to make sound, not emotional, decisions based on universal data that all points to the same thing. That is, children are the lowest-risk group of any demographic of dying. Other countries have made the correct decisions about not mandating masks for our kids. I just hope we can do the same thing. Thank you.
Shannon?
Next is from Beth Grady, Parker Drive. Dear members of the Merrimack School Board, I wrote a letter which was read aloud at Monday's school board meeting. In this letter, I discussed the exponentially growing COVID cases within the Merrimack schools. I did a comparison between districts that have a mask mandate with no opt-out to those that do not. The numbers were crystal clear, yet not surprising at all. When I wrote this letter, the number of active cases in Merrimack was fifty-one as of Friday, November twelfth. I was appalled. I went and checked the numbers again just four days later and they were up to ninety-one. That's right, in just four days, the already alarmingly high COVID cases within our schools had nearly doubled. I have been watching the school board meetings and can say that everyone, board members, and the residents of this town have a common goal and can agree on one thing. Children belong in school. Unfortunately, due to COVID, many children are missing out on invaluable instructional time. On one day alone, Merrimack had ninety-one absences due to active cases, seventy-eight absences due to quarantining, in parentheses, unvaccinated household contacts, and eighty-five absences due to symptomatic students pending results. This means that on one day alone, two hundred and fifty-four students were absent. Two hundred and fifty-four students missed out on instructional time. Most of these students will remain out ten to fourteen days. Masks have been provided to reduce the spread. I've heard people speak at these meetings claiming my child my choice. Unfortunately, even more than a year and a half- choice. Unfortunately, even more than a year and a half into this pandemic, some people do not seem to understand that wearing a mask protects others from the mask wearer. I believe the saying goes, my mask protects you, your mask protects me. When a parent chooses to opt their child out, they are actually choosing to put other children in danger. They are not simply choosing for their child. Their decision impacts many. Children whose parents have been diligent about following all the experts, such as the CDC, American Academy of Pediatrics, New Hampshire Department of Health and Safety, are still getting sick and losing out on instructional time because other parents are making the choice to put children at risk. This is not right. The board has always said that they would regularly revisit the district's mask policy due to trends in numbers. If the numbers were rapidly decreasing, would you revisit for a more lenient policy? Likely. Now that the numbers are rapidly increasing, it is time to revisit and remove the opt-out choice. With ages 5 to 11 beginning to become vaccinated, the hope is that the numbers will decrease soon, and when that time comes, perhaps another change can be made. The situation is fluid and the mask policy should mimic the current data. I wholeheartedly believe that the members of this board's number-one priority is the well-being and best interests of our children. 91 active cases, 254 students absent and not receiving instruction, that's simply not putting children first. Jenna, Cindy, Shannon, Lori, Lori, is your number-one priority, the safety and well-being of the children? Do you want to see as many children in school as possible? If so, please do what all of the experts are recommending. Please heed the recommendation of the CDC, WHO, APA, and NHDHS, and keep a mask mandate, but please remove the opt-out feature. Thank you, Beth Grady.
Next up.
Hi, good evening. Heather Robitaille, Springfield Circle. Thanks for having us here tonight. I just want to say, I support people's right to choose. I think that is important. But when it takes the right of another child or another family member to receive a safe education away, then that's where that freedom ends. These decisions that you're about to make, that the school boards across the country are making, they're not made in a bubble. I wish they were. But if one child is exposed and they live with a vulnerable family member, then that family member's at risk. I feel like looking at just a death toll sets a pretty low bar for what we're willing to expose one another to. And I know in this community, we care about one another. If one of us was broken down on the side of the road, we would probably stop and see if we could help someone. This is a really simple way that we can help do things and we can help keep our kids in school. I respect the board's decision in September to find middle ground on a highly emotional and intense topic. But this compromise now is jeopardizing the ability of our district to continue to provide safe, in-person education to our children. When this opt-out was initially suggested, I believe I remember Board Member Peters, that you did say that it could change on a dime based on numbers, which makes sense. And I think unfortunately, what we all did not want to happen is the numbers now warrant a change in that. The isolation that children are going to wind up inevitably facing from schools potentially having to shut down because of additional strains that we're facing with substitute shortages. If the teachers are sick and they're out, if the children are then out, we are losing that in-person education time and we are failing to provide that to our students. This is a way that I would support temporarily pausing on the parent opt-out. Continue to have a clear and transparent process for revisiting it monthly, looking at the data, and determining what the best steps forward are to protect our staff, to protect our students, and to continue providing them the education that they deserve. COVID may not be going away, but right now, we need a chance to allow as many people that choose to get vaccinated to get vaccinated, and we need to give them that chance. If things start shutting down, you know, they will only get worse. Right now in Europe, people are placing unvaccinated people on house arrest because things have gotten so crazy. I am very glad we're not in Europe because I don't want to see that happen. I want to see our community continue to come together and thrive. We can't opt out of doing this together, and if these numbers increase, our hospitals are impacted, our nurses, my sister who's a nurse, is burnt out and tired, and she can't provide the care that she would to anyone's family member if they were in a car accident. If God forbid, someone had a heart attack, we are at the point where we are jeopardizing that again. So I please ask you to continue to support data, to pause the parent opt-out until the numbers return, similar to where we were in September, and have a transparent policy on revisiting that. Thank you.
I'm just noticing the time, so we'll do one more public comment online and then one more up at the microphone, and then we'll move to the business portion of our meeting.
Okay, from Reed is Press, 37 Berkeley Street, I'm sorry if I got your name wrong. To the members of the Merrimack School Board, I'm writing in support of suspending the opt-out option for masking in our schools. At the start of the school year, the board voted to allow families to opt out of masking requirements with the understanding that data could change at any time. That time is now. The data listed on the COVID dashboard shows that numbers are rapidly rising, putting all of our students and staff at risk for contracting COVID. In fall of 2020, students whose families chose the hybrid option were switched to fully remote prior to Thanksgiving throughout the holiday season, returning to in-person learning after the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday. Now the 2021 holiday season is among us. People will be gathering with families, traveling to functions, and increasing their circle of contacts. Many of the prior mitigation measures have already been terminated, including the separation of individual desks and plexiglass partitions. The goals of the school board should be twofold: to keep students safe and to keep the children in the school buildings, learning from our dedicated and exceptional staff. This is not the time to ignore the data. This is not the time to continue to make this a political issue. This is a matter of public health, and ignoring the science behind that factual data shows is irresponsible, dangerous, and unacceptable. Make the right decision here. We are continuing to count on you to keep our children safe. Reed is Press. And Cindy, probably email should be the last one because I think public comment at the mic went first.
Okay, that's fair enough.
So one more?
Yep, great. One more at the mic and the one more email. Thank you.
Hi, Lindsay Tebow, 19 Pleasant Street. I just wanted to quickly speak on my wishes to again keep at the very minimum the opt-out option in the classroom. Instead of looking at the local numbers, I'd like you to take into consideration more so the transmission in the schools and lack thereof, also the effects that COVID has on children, which the majority is extremely minimal. I'm confused as to why at this point we're treating this differently than the flu, which is actually much more symptomatic and extreme for kids. As I've said before, this still allows parents to send their child with masks if they wish, and now are able to vaccinate them if that's what they want as well. We are almost two years into this. We know the facts, and these kids deserve normalcy. And I did just want to say, as far as the intimidation goes, I feel like trying to make you guys think that you're going to kill their kids if you don't put a mask mandate into effect, that's intimidation. Thank you.
Shannon?
And Cindy Parenti, 9 Chady Lane. Dear members of the Merrimack School Board, my name is Cindy Parenti, and I would like to take a moment to praise all of you. Back in September, when the tempers were on edge, you promised to keep an eye on COVID statistics in our schools and forge a path forward. Tonight's emergency meeting is proof positive that your concern for our children, our community at large, is ultimately rooted in science as the number of active cases has jumped from 9 to 87 in a matter of weeks. The virus is surging in New Hampshire and creating an opportunity for the COVID-19 virus to further mutate, threatening all of us. Tactics such as mask-wearing, social distancing, washing hands, and especially vaccinations have proven effective in combating the spread of this disease that has already claimed over 750,000 American lives. I urge the board to remove the mask opt-out option for our children. We simply must stop this disease in its tracks. Thank you, Cindy Parenti.
Okay, thank you. Now we will move on to old business, item number three. The first is the Health and Safety Task Force recommendation. Mr. Olson.
Yes, thank you very much, and good evening, everyone. This is never an easy topic to discuss. Whether you are in favor of masking or not, it is always fraught with emotion. We had a wonderful and very thorough meeting of the Health and Safety Task Force, and we tried to look at the data and come up with a strategy for dealing with the growing numbers. I do want to go through some slides with you. First of all, as you know, as we all know, the current mask policy is, has an opt-out option at parents' request. We presently have about 1,250 students whose parents have opted them out. It's about a third of our school population. Masks other than in the classroom, where the opt-out option is operable. Masks are being worn in all other areas of the school building, which is the current policy. No masks are required outside. But we do still live with a mandate from the CDC in terms of mandatory masking on school buses and vans. That is a requirement. One of the things that we're concerned about right now, and it is happening across the state, it's happening across the country. If you watched the news the last couple of days, unfortunately, New Hampshire and Vermont are two of the states that have some of the highest rates of increases in transmission. Don't know why that is, but that is the reality. And we're seeing in the school system, an increase in the number of students who are testing positive for COVID over the last two weeks in some schools. Now, that does not mean that that transmission necessarily occurred in the school, okay? But the reality of it is, we are seeing more and more students who have tested positive for the COVID virus. But not all schools in Merrimack have been impacted the same, and that's very interesting. And I'm going to show you some data to support that as we go through the presentation. This is a graph that goes back to October 1. Just wanted to present to you for informational purposes, the number of positive cases, number of students testing positive and who are positive with the virus district-wide. Not sure what's happened in the last two weeks. You know, a month ago, I was reporting to the school board and to all of you that our trends were beginning to look pretty encouraging. We were down to seven cases, system-wide, district-wide, of positive students. But in the last two weeks, and this is kind of a mirror image of what is happening around the country and what is happening across the state and parts of New England, the numbers have skyrocketed. And don't know whether it's because windows are now being closed more frequently, people are indoors more often, but the reality of it is, the numbers are increasing. Here are a number of students, the trend since October 1 also, who are on quarantine. And there are specific regulations with respect to quarantine in terms of vaccinated, not vaccinated, household member, non-household, you know, contact that have come down from the New Hampshire Department of Public Health and Human Services. But those numbers have increased also. The state data that pertains to Merrimack focuses on the rate of new infections per 100,000 residents over the last 14 days. And in addition, the state data focuses on antigen and PCR test positivity rates in the last seven, seven days. Those are the two sources of data that the Department of Public Health in New Hampshire has used to construct its matrix of minimal, moderate, or substantial transmission. The DPHS has indicated that if you have a rate of new infections of, per 100,000, of 100 or more, or a test positivity rate of 5% or more, your community is considered in condition of substantial transmission. So I gave you a little bit of information here going back to, to August, to show how we've, how we've really mushroomed in the last couple of weeks. As of two days ago, our rate of new infections per 100,000 was 843, and you can see back in August, it was 174. Our test positivity rate is 18.4%. Now, that was down around 5.1 and 5.2% at, at one point, about six weeks ago. And so, you know, there is something that's happening in terms of the increase in transmission. So the Health and Safety Task Force met, and we wanted to be as thoughtful as possible, and we wanted to take, after considerable discussion, a targeted approach and not a blanket approach. And interestingly, in listening to the Commissioner of Education in the last day or so, it's one of the approaches that he happened to advocate, and that is the targeted approach. So what we have come up with is a suggested revision to the existing policy, and it's based around the 5% test positivity rate that the DPHS uses, okay, to, to determine the level of community transmission, whether minimal, moderate, or substantial. And so the, the policy change that we're recommending is that if the number of positive COVID cases, both staff and students, because they're occupants of the building, in an individual school, is 5% or greater of the total number of staff and students in the building, masks will be required for all students and staff while in the school building. No masks will be required while students and/or staff are outside or while eating lunch or snack, which is the current practice. And if the percentage of positive cases, that includes the aggregation of staff and students, in an individual school is below 5% for two consecutive weeks, the opt-out mask policy will be reinstated. We want to try and bring some flexibility in this, in the policy now that we're experiencing a rapid increase. So it's the recommendation that if the school board does approve this recommended policy change that targets specific schools that might have higher incidence than others, that the policy become effective this upcoming Monday, November 22. Now, just to give you some idea of what's, what's happening, we have graphs for every school in terms of the number of positive students, that's the blue, number of positive staff. As you can see, the incidence of transmission of staff, the number of cases of staff is quite low. It's very low, and that's very fortunate because we want to have as many teachers in classrooms as possible because quite honestly, there are very few substitute teachers throughout this entire area. So this is Mastercola Elementary School. This is one of the areas that we're concerned about, and let me just get, get out of that. Reed's Ferry is showing an increase, all right, in the numbers, but once again, staff fairly, fairly minimal. Thornton's Ferry is also exhibiting an increase, and it's hard to determine why that is, why one school has a higher incidence of transmission and another doesn't. There are so many variables that come into, come into play. Mastercola Upper Elementary. Now, interestingly, the same building complex, the same infrastructure, you know, separated certainly from the elementary school, but a smaller increase than the elementary. Very interesting is the impact of COVID in the middle school and the high school. The number of cases, relatively speaking, compared to the elementary school is quite low. As you can see the trend, and we try to plot every, every couple of weeks or so since October 1, but relatively few cases in, in the middle school and the high school. And that's why the Health and Safety Task Force felt that it was better to have a targeted strategy instead of a blanket strategy of saying, okay, there's some transmission in a higher than, you know, we'd like to see in some schools, so we're gonna, we're going to have one policy revision. going to have one policy revision that affects all students. We chose not to do that. What we've done here is present to you by school, the student enrollment, the staff, a number of staff in the building, and the total number of occupants in each respective school, and the number of total positive cases at the present, okay, as of yesterday, in fact. And those cases include both students and staff. The percentage of occupants testing positive, as you see in, in Master Cola Elementary School, is about 7.34%, but all of the other schools are quite a bit lower than that. Yes, they do have cases, and that's not to be minimized, but as a percentage of the occupants of the building, not as severe at the present time as the Master Cola Elementary School. So we're recommending that change in the policy, but on a targeted basis, for those schools, once again, let me go back to this slide, who have a test positivity rate with the aggregation of students and staff of 5% or greater. At the present time, it only impacts Master Cola Elementary School. What that means is, in the other buildings, the current opt-out policy would, would continue, unless, if the board approves the recommended revision, unless their positivity rate, their test positivity rate, is 5% or greater. Look, you know, there's debate, there's been a debate for two years now. All of us are tired of it, in terms of what works, what doesn't work, who's data to believe, who's data not to believe. But we're trying to follow as much of the science as possible, all right? And we're looking to kind of re-up on other mitigation strategies that might help us reduce the incidence of transmission in the school system. If your child is ill, they need to stay home and ask that you, they be tested for, for the virus. Vaccinations, obviously, another controversial issue, all right? But they are available now to children five and above, and I would encourage as many people as possible to have their child vaccinated. We are going to reemphasize handwashing, healthy practices, and cleaning, once again. We always have great, very good cleaning in our buildings. We have some of the cleanest schools in the entire area. But we're also going to strategically, where necessary, start fogging at night with a disinfectant, okay? EPA-approved, okay? And that's one of the strategies that was in, in, in place over the last, last school year, okay? And proper mask-wearing. One of the things that we want to do is make sure that we reinforce and that you reinforce whether you, you know, and I understand, a lot of people don't want to have masks worn, but it is a mitigating strategy. And what we're trying to do is reinforce to children to wear your mask properly, okay? Not down around, under your nose, under your chin, okay?
Excuse, excuse me.
So that is a, an important strategy that we hope to, to reemphasize also, is to wear a mask properly. Look, I understand, we all understand. We, we want these things to go away, okay? We do. But once again, my responsibility to the school board, my responsibility to you, is to keep, keep our children, to keep our children in school.
Okay, this, wait, one moment, please. We are in the middle of a business meeting. Please allow us to continue, or we will have to close this meeting to the public, so we can continue. And that has not been done in other communities, and it has not been done in this community yet, and I don't want this to be the first night to do it. There's no reason we have to do it. I just ask for respect for the speakers that are speaking. We'll give you time again to speak at the end. Thank you.
So that concludes my presentation of the recommendation of the Health and Safety Task Force.
Thank you. Board, questions? Comments? Lori Peters and Shannon.
Shannon, go.
Shannon, then Lori.
Do we have any data based on those who are test positive and quarantining, how many, like, schools are actually being impacted by quarantining, even if the test positive is only coming out of, because I know that when you have siblings, that kind of thing, they're impacted. My, my concern is absenteeism. Honestly, that's, you know, as much as we, it's, it's obviously, another concern is absenteeism, not the only concern. My, my concern with the plan is, I feel like we're going to be playing mask whack-a-mole. Honestly, you know, this is the time last year where we had to send everyone home. I mean, we just, everyone was home, it was all remote, even if you were a hybrid, you became remote. And we don't want that. We don't want any of it, not, we can't even do it if we did want to. We cannot do remote learning by mandate to the governor. So these are concerns I have, that students are going to fall behind. So there, I have a couple of questions. I know that we did buy the technology, and I'm not saying that, you know, it'd be a hybrid learning or remote learning, like, as an election, but while kids are home, have we looked to integrate the technology that we did invest in using federal funding to at least let kids sit in school if they're home quarantining, perfectly healthy, but just exposed, so they can at least not fall behind in context on the content that they have in class? So I, I'd like that to be explored, but I'm just really concerned about the whack-a-mole approach this, this can create, because, you know, you hit 5%, you hit 4%, you're off the mask, you're on the mask, you're off the mask. And honestly, I think that there's going to be, this period between Thanksgiving and 14 days after, which really, that Martin Luther King Jr. Day that we used as a benchmark last year, if, if we did have to do anything different, I think this is the time to be consistent with a practice of maybe full-time masking and not having the opt-out for that time, and revisiting it the day after Martin Luther King Jr., which we happen to have a scheduled board meeting that day usually. So that's, those are my thoughts on it, but I want, yeah, I want to hear what others have to say.
Lori?
So I have a couple of questions. At Master Cola, what is the number of clusters? Are these, are, I guess what I'm asking is, the 39 random across the school, or do we have a number of clusters?
We had, we have had four, four clusters at the school.
Four clusters. Involving, I know the minimum of clusters is three, but do you know the, the approximate number of, average of those clusters?
I would have to say between, I mean, three to five.
Okay. My other concern with the 5%, which I think is very conservative, is that at what point do we say, this isn't working? So we have universal masking for two weeks, and it's still 5%. We do it another two weeks, and it's still 5%. Obviously, that's not an in-school problem, that's an out-of-school problem. And being a teacher of teenagers, I see them, they'll wear a mask in school, but they won't wear it at their friend's house at the weekend, or, you know, at the paintball range, and places like that. So my, that, that's one of my concerns, is, is the cutoff point, at which we decide that, that it's not working within our school district, even if we implement this policy. So I'm, I'm considering possibly proposing a different metric, still a metric-based decision, but doing a targeting, like you said, practice where it's affecting where we have the clusters, instead of just the whole school. And it being a targeted two weeks, because in that two weeks, you have your quarantined students who were ill, out and back, you have anybody who may have been exposed, if they're sick or not, there, we know that, at that, at that end time of two weeks, and then it goes back to the, the opt-out.
I'll be after, Jenna. Okay. Jenna, and then Lori Rothaus.
So I, I have a few things to say. First of all, we definitely cannot be making this decision on feelings, our own, up here, or anyone else's. The only way to make this decision is based on facts and data as it relates to the Merrimack School District. I am very grateful that you came up with a, another compromise, another way of, of looking at our population and saying, how can we avoid putting everyone back in a mask when it seems clear that at minimum, the minimum, the middle school and the high school, among others, definitely don't need to be back in masks? Whatever we're doing there, and however it's working out there, it's working. Maybe the amount of vaccinations is just the right amount, or what, I don't know. But doesn't seem like we need to be putting them back in a mask, so I'm glad that that's not on the table. I'm glad that, that, that we're targeting correctly. Because there has been this standing, like, we're going to revisit it every month, but we're, we're, nobody has been really knowledgeable of any specific data we were going to be working on, we have all, on both sides of the issue, been strapped into this rollercoaster and blindfolded, and it's been a heck of a ride. Not, not a pleasant one for anyone. It's been horrible, and I don't know about anybody else here, but I don't like rollercoasters. And so I haven't enjoyed this any more than anybody else, because I show up at every meeting and I feel like we're at the whim of, I don't know what, people's opinions, our own feelings, whatever we've been at the whim at. And having some credible data to work from, and having a plan in place where the numbers make call, make the decisions, and we don't, for me, takes a whole lot of the emotion out of it, of the, a lot of the stress out of it, a lot of the guessing game out of it, and allows us all to at least go back to some predictability. You talked about whack-a-mole. I live, I live, I live right here in Merrimack. I work in a district where this is their policy, it is their policy across the board. It, it goes by their town, the town number, if it is this, mandatory masking for everybody. If it is this, you know, it's mask optional for 12 and up, but it's mandatory for the young, 12 and under, or 11 and under. And if it's this, it's, you know, whatever, whatever the guidelines are. And it works seamlessly. It has given everybody in that town some predictability, they know what to expect, they can watch the numbers and say, okay, I guess we're going to be masking tomorrow, and then they go, they, the superintendent just sends out, the board doesn't have to meet, they don't have to have a big meeting, they don't have to do anything, the data is there, the protocol is there, they send out an email, they say, okay, this is the new protocol, effective tomorrow, and everybody switches, and it has been a non-issue. And that district, which is completely comparable to Merrimack, has only six COVID cases in their district. So on some level, it works. We're not even looking at doing that, and the whack-a-mole, we can call it whack-a-mole, or we can call it targeted. We can call it smart. We can call it not making people unnecessarily upset when we don't have to. You know, some of them don't even like the situation as it is, but if we can say to them, okay, listen, we know you don't like the way it is, but we're only going to go back to this strategy for a certain period of time until we get things under control, and then we're going to back off. And somebody asked, I don't even think he's here anymore, but somebody asked, you know, when is this going to end? And for me, I can't answer that question for everybody, but for me, I feel a responsibility to protect, to provide care, welfare, safety, and security for all students until all of them have the opportunity to be vaccinated. I do not give a care in the world what anybody chooses to do with their own children as far as vaccinations. I don't. But I want everybody to be protected until everybody has the opportunity to be fully vaccinated, so that everybody can go to school confident that their child is going to be protected from severe illness. For me, that is important. I am very grateful that you guys took the time to find an approach that didn't just throw a mask on everybody, because we could have done that, but I, and I, I didn't, to be honest, didn't even think of doing a targeted approach, but I like it much better. I thank you, I thank you for putting the time into thinking of a solution that doesn't take away that opt-out, that is so important. I hear how important it is to you. I want you to know that I hear that. It's important to people. So it keeps that while allowing us to mitigate transmission that we don't know where it's coming from. And in, you know, in Thornton's Ferry, I can say for sure, I know that in one class, out of however many kids, I think 18 in the class, there's only seven kids. So on some level, you got to wonder why that's happening in one classroom. Do you know what I mean? And so I appreciate the targeted approach, because I think it continues to, to strike a compromise, and I think that's what we're still trying to do, until we can get everybody the opportunity to be vaccinated. And it seems like Martin Luther King Jr. Day is a great time to sit and reevaluate. So from now to then, we do this targeted approach, and then maybe we can say, okay, every kid has had the opportunity to be fully vaccinated, and now what do we do? That's my thought.
Lori Rothaus?
So I would vote to continue the Merrimack School Policy EBCVM. It was designed to meet the COVID outbreak, and it was administrated, administered according to the established procedures of the district. And if we go back to October 18, 2021, we created a part of this document that said that if there was community transmissions, if there was clusters, as a school district, we would revisit and we would talk about the policy. So I'm supportive of the policy we created, and I'm, I'm supportive that we're back at the table having discussions.
And I would say this. I also thank you and the Task Force Administration for going back and, and, you know, revisiting this, coming back with a solution, and, you know, and I echo many of the comments that have been said tonight, and certainly, for me, the number one thing is keeping kids in school. The other thing I think we need to talk about it, then, you know, as soon as we can, is how do we maximize and make school more effective for those that are quarantined? Because I feel we have a huge gap there, but that's, that's not for tonight, but I just want to say that. That's a huge concern to me at this time. I, I support your proposal. I think that it makes sense, you know, to take a precaution. This was the time that I was most worried about, because this is, you know, one thing is history repeats itself, and, you know, it's the reason why there is a, if, let's say, a flu season, there's a reason why cases spike of COVID right now, because people come inside, and it takes a while for it to start to propagate. So we have to keep safety at the forefront of our students and our staff. And, you know, to what was said about the high school and the middle school, if we're not seeing significant transmission, that's one thing, and that's great. The other thing is, those children and families have had their choice on whether they want to get vaccinated or not. That's obviously, in my mind, is probably has an impact on what we're seeing there. And right now, the cases are emerging in the elementary level, right as vaccinations are option, optional. And again, this is not, every family has to make that choice on vaccinations, but these families are just getting that choice now, and the spread is spiking pretty quickly. So I, I support, if we have a school with a significant outbreak, it's not unlike other districts. Bedford has done that on occasion, to my understanding, where it's two weeks, look at the spread. To Lori's point, if we don't see the numbers go down, then that's, that's an indication. But if the numbers go down, back to our traditional opt-out, and we continue on. So I don't know that we need, per se, a set timeframe through Martin Luther King. I think that we should be revisiting these numbers at every school board meeting as we go through December, and see what's happening, and talk about it briefly at each meeting. And I think that what we have said is, this essentially is a change to the policy that gives some flexibility. I would also advocate to administration in supporting this, that there's some additional flexibility. As I mentioned at the meeting on Monday, you know, if there is one class, you know, and kids are, you know, exiting like crazy, you know, maybe you don't put it, and it doesn't meet the 5%, maybe there's one class, and the school nurse, that work with the school nurses, to make sure that you, because there's an incubation period, and as kids are sitting there, they've been exposed, if you have a class where there's 17 kids normally, and there's eight, those kids have been exposed, and it might require another strategic mitigation attempt without it being the whole school. So I would say that that would be something that I would add to allow flexibility, and if there's a metric that we a metric that we needed to discuss of what that looks like, that's fine. Um, if we need a percentage of the classroom, I mean, I, um, at some point, there has to be, you know, there's been the the talk of turning on a dime. Well, these things do turn on a dime. And like, for example, our next school board meeting is three weeks from now. A lot can happen in three weeks. And um, you know, we may not be able to come back together every time you want to make a a slight change. So I think it's important to think of preparedness so that we're proactive and not reactive about um, some of the issues. But I, you know, if the opt-out is working at the middle school and the high school and the and the cases are low, then I support that. But what we're seeing in the elementary schools right now are significant spikes. I don't think anyone can deny that. Um, but those are, those are my thoughts.
Can I make a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the administration, giving our chief educational officer the authority to enact his re- his recommendation based on the percentage of occupants testing positive um, as presented effective Monday, November 22nd.
Do I have a second? I'll second.
Discussion.
Discussion.
I still think that if even adopting that policy, there's got to be an end date. It can't just be every two weeks, we keep it going and going and going. I'm, I just think, while I think 5% is very conservative, 5% is also a very low number that we could just continually have. And without a more targeted approach, where we're looking at a specific class, certain number of clusters, I I'm just concerned that it won't end.
Would you? Well, the end, the end is if the percentage of positive cases in the individual school drops below 5% for two consecutive weeks. That, that may mean it goes on a longer time, but that is the end right there. That's the end date.
But that's my point. We could get, we could get to March, and every school will still be at 5%.
Would you feel better if we just made the recommendation, as we've done in the past, for the month of December? And then, that way, we revisit it the second meeting in December?
So I'm just going to go back to say, we already have a policy, and the policy doesn't state percentages. It says, we're going to come back to the table. But this, the policy is the school board policy. And so I think as a school board, we need to set what that policy is. And then, what are the policies, what are the procedures of that policy? And I want to say one more thing, too. Um, I hope by January, because now everyone by January will have a chance to be vaccinated. So I think by January, that we should not, I mean, when I, you know, start looking at the data and things that are going on in our schools, we have, we have so much that we have to accomplish. And so I'm hoping by January, we can move forward.
Jenna, would you be willing to amend your motion um, to grant authority through the end of December for the December's recommendation?
No.
Okay.
Sorry. Somebody else can make a motion. I think that that gives a clear end date. And if it goes till March, then it goes till March, because nobody wants that. But if people have their masks on and everything keeps going, I think we have a responsibility to protect students. And so I I believe the end date is there, two consecutive weeks at less than 5%.
Shannon.
As the chair, you have the authority to set the agenda. So if we want to revisit data and on, if the data is driving a need for an adjustment to the decision, you can always put that on an agenda, make sure it's posted prior to. So honestly, you know, I think the amendment's unnecessary, because we can always revisit any issue if it doesn't meet the needs of our students on any topic. So I think you always have that as the chair, the the uh, the right to set as an agenda item and, you know, boards, you know, response to um, data. You could put that on every agenda item, to be honest with you. That's why I'm saying this, like this emergency meeting, then if it's a standing thing with a a proper announcement of expectations of actions of the board, that can always be updated as needed to support the need to the district. So that said, you know, yes, I know what your intent is, but if data drives a different need, we can always put that on any agenda at any time.
100%.
So I'm not really worried about the adjustment of the of the date for that reason.
Okay, you make a good point. Board Member Rothaus.
Okay, so um, I'm, I support what Lori said. I think we need to have an end date. That's, you know, I think that would be a better compromise.
Um, alternatively, what I can do is promise that I will put it on the agenda for the second meeting in December, um, so that it will be discussed. And then, the end date or no end date, it's really irrelevant.
Well, I, and I would agree to that, and I appreciate that. What I do want to say, though, is, and and I agree with Board Member Rothaus, once we get to Jan- mid-January, everyone will have had the opportunity to be vaccinated and be there two weeks post-vaccination. We don't have a vaccination shortage. And so we said at the beginning of this, we would also take into consideration, if that became a possibility, to even remove back to where we were prior. Because that is where people's choice will lie at that point. Obviously, it hasn't been out long enough for people to have their children to have their two vaccinations and then be two weeks post the second one. But by mid-January, they will.
I would be willing to amend mine to say that this goes until Martin Luther King Day, and we will reevaluate at that point with that in mind.
With the addition of it being on the gen- agenda for data, data consideration.
That's fine. We can do both. There's, I mean, it's not set in stone. This is a fluid situation. So um, it's only set in stone until it's not. And so I would second that amendment of your motion.
Um, so, so I I guess what I'm saying is, I'm I'm saying we can reevaluate at the Martin Luther King date. I don't, I think it's too early to reevaluate based on anything. I think this stands until Martin Luther King Day. And then after that, we can talk about the fact that we may go to a full optional mask policy when everybody has the ability to be vaccinated. So I'm willing to consider that at that point. But I think until then, I would, I would prefer not to be strapped to the roller coaster and blindfolded and let him make the decision based on this strategy right there. So I don't know whether I need to make an amendment or not.
No, I mean, I I'm still going to put it on the agenda. I mean, that's been our protocol since the beginning of the year, that we take the second, there's really no reason to change that at this point. I think consistency is important, and um, and that's what we've said to the public, is the second meeting of every month, we're going to talk about for the following month. And until we get something that seems like it can last us, or something maybe a little more defined, then I, I personally would prefer that we keep that.
Okay. So I will amend my motion. I, um, okay, how do I word this? I uh, move that we accept the CEO's and the Health Task Force, Health, the tra- and Safety Task Force recommendation as presented with the ability to review it at our December meeting, the second December meeting, and again, after Martin Luther King Junior Day. Have I covered all the bases?
All right, we've got it covered. All right, I'm going to go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none. That's 5-0-0. Thank you. All right. Um, now we are back to item number four, which is back to the public comments. Um, since we ended with the email, we'll go ahead and start with a microphone for anyone who wishes to speak. Again, just a reminder, um, okay, just state your name and address for the record.
Tom Gibson, 25, Packer Drive, Merrimack. Um, I heard a lot of things tonight, and I think one of the most important things is teaching the kids that are not in school. We need to find a way so that they can continue in their classroom. The gentleman, I don't know if he's still here or not, talked about the masks, how they really are not as protective as we think they are. What else are we doing in the classrooms? Are we sanitizing desks? Are we sanitizing chairs? That's just as important as wearing a mask. If we're not doing one, we shouldn't do the other. The other thing I heard was that it's the parent's choice to be vaccinated or not be vaccinated. Why is it not the parent's choice to mask or not mask? That's all I have. Oh, I have one more thing. Can I say one more thing?
You sure may, sir.
Pardon me?
Absolutely.
Okay. They were talking about bullying. You should never be bullied. You're doing a job. Half is going to agree with you, half is not going to agree with you. Bullying comes in many forms. And I heard bullying tonight. And you should never be bullied.
Mr. Gibson, I'd like to um, thank you for your service and your son's service. Um, he was a hero for our town. He was amazing young man. And um, so I appreciate him.
You're no help, Lori. Sorry. Ashley Lowe, West Chamberlain Road. Uh, hello, school board members. Thank you very much for your service and dedication to our students. I am sure none of you ever thought your service to this town would be so stressful or fraught with such tension. I write today to plead with the board to please strengthen our current policy on masking. With the current policy, when the current current policy was put into place, there was wording that would be revisited monthly and changes could be made at any time if the situation with COVID-19 changed. Without taking up time with statistics and specific numbers, it is clear that the case counts are up. Hospitalizations are up, deaths are up. I saw in the news just this morning that for the first time in months, the predicted numbers of deaths is not expected to decline. Record numbers of children are becoming ill with COVID. It is time to straighten the mask mandate and remove the option for parents to opt their children out of wearing masks. I do expect that there are exceptions to be made if the student has a disability that makes masking too challenging for them. Those exceptions should be allowed on a case-by-case basis. However, for those students who can tolerate a mask and have no medical reason for an exemption, I believe now is not the time for them, or, I'm sorry, now is, it is the time for them to help protect our community and ask mask up while in our buildings. While we have surrounding districts that are four times the size of Merrimack who currently have less than half the number of cases in schools, those districts have mask mandates. It is time for the board to vote with science and protect our students, faculty, support staff, and every other person who depends, who spends time in our school buildings. It is essential that schools remain open. My son spent a year and a half remotely learning from home. He has autism. He is on an IEP. He finally went back into person, to in-person learning at the end of June. It has been so good for him. I have returned to work. I'm sure my family is not the only one in town who finally feels some sense of normalcy returning to their household after a tumultuous year. Having to adjust all over again to a district shutdown and/or to a return to remote instruction would be devastating. Please vote in the best interest of the safety of our community. Please vote to remove the opt-out of the current mask policy and protect our students. Thank you, Ashley Lowe.
Okay, next up at the microphone, Mrs. Comar.
Hi, Kathy Comar, Belmont Drive. Um, Bill, I just have a question. On this page...
I can't hear you.
Yes, okay. You have the number 843. As of today, total population in Merrimack, 175 cases. So I know I question you all the time, but you said as of 11/16, 843 cases. Um, we have 175 total for the entire population of Merrimack. So I don't know where you're getting these numbers.
This stage is, it's sort of normalized for different populations. That's why it's a projection of 843 cases per, per 100,000. That's what you can add and then with the number you're...
Okay, but um, I guess my point is...
I don't want to interrupt, but this is public comment, and it's not a discussion. I'm sorry. Like, we're not, this is unfortunately not a time to answer questions.
I have the right to ask where you're getting the numbers from.
You definitely do, but not in a public...
Wait, wait.
Meeting. It's, she's making a point, the numbers are wrong. Um, administration will take that back. We know how to reach you.
Yeah.
We'll get back in touch and share.
Yeah, I just want to know, like, where this number is, because that's a very misleading number. Because people are looking at this, and they're going, oh, my God, you're saying we have 843 cases in town? No, we don't. We have 175. So I just feel that that is very misleading. That's all I'm saying.
If it's incorrect, I'll ask it to be posted on our website.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure, no problem. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Cinda, um, we have 33 emails still. So if anyone has spoken, can we have them wait till the end of everything to speak a second time?
Yes.
Great. Okay. Because I have 33 more emails.
Oh, Jesus.
So therefore, yeah. And I actually already took out, um, some that I saw here but didn't point out yet. So I think you've, you're already covered. Uh, so on to Pat McGrath, Patrick M. McGrath, 7 Peter Road. To the Merrimack School Board Administration, as part of, as a past school board member for two terms, I want to share with you a litany of decisions that prior boards and our administrations made. In the event of a fire, all schools practice how to safely evacuate a building. That is risk management for all concerned. Should there be a hazardous mission near to a school building, plans were designed, reviewed, approved, and practiced to evacuate to a designated location was risk management for all concerned. Should there be an intruder in, to one of the buildings, plans were designed, reviewed, approved, and practiced to shelter in place was risk management for all concerned. Requiring that all coaches, educators, support staff, and substitutes submit to background checks, that was risk management for all concerned. When asbestos was discovered in the school buildings, plans were designed, reviewed, approved, and funded to eliminate that health hazard was risk management for all concerned. When the ravages of storms imperiled students safely traveling to school, administration protected all concern by keeping the schools closed. That was risk management for all concerned. When mold was discovered at J Muse, a plan was designed, reviewed, and approved and funded to eliminate that health hazard was risk management for all concerned. When PFOAs were discovered in the drinking water from Merrimack, a plan was designed, reviewed, approved, and funded to eliminate that health hazard for all concerned. Given this pattern and practice of providing a safe learning environment for all concerned, the implementation of a facial covering policy is a risk management practice that is beneficial for all concerned and is judiciously implemented by administration. It makes for better and healthier community of learners and classroom success leaders. Patrick McGrath.
All right, next at the microphone, please. And just before we continue, I just want to, as people are, before everyone leaves, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. Um, and just to have that moment before people walk out. Or for those that are turning off TV, thank you for listening. Thank you for caring about the community we all live in. Um, Mr. Reisman, are you next? Or is it, who's next? Okay.
Robbie Reisman, Iris Drive. Um, in the interest of us not staying here forever, I'll keep it brief. Um, a couple of things have come to mind. I know we all are in agreement on certain things. Like, we've been talking about wanting to retain teachers and staff. Um, I think it's great that we all, I mean, we all had a great discussion about that during the last meeting. Um, that's very important. I think part of that, it's not just the contract that's coming up, but also showing that we care about their safety and well-being. So I think in areas where, you know, where COVID cases are high, um, or even in the elementary, middle, and um, upper elementary schools, having universal masking right now is a good idea until all the kids could get vaccinated. I know Hudson is doing that. They have one total COVID case in their, both of their elementary schools. And their population, student population is, I believe, 3197, and ours is like 3796 or something like that. So something's working there. Um, and I like the targeted approach we talked about tonight, because I didn't know that the high school and middle school cases are pretty low, so I can understand why. This might not be as necessary there. But I would just advocate at least for the elementary and upper, upper elementary, that we mandated masks for now, um, until the MLK Day that we talked about. I know we're kind of past that point now, but that's what I would have said if I'd spoken even earlier. I don't know if it would have made a difference anyways. Um, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon?
Caitlin Bernier, Tubert Street. Dear members of the school board, I'm writing to you today to ask you to reconsider the stance on the current masking policy within our schools. Right now, students can opt out of wearing masks regardless of how many positive cases there are in their class. The current cases of COVID are rising quickly in our town, and everyone is feeling the negative effects, whether they have been following guidelines all along or not. Other towns around us with more students have less COVID numbers than we do and have mask mandates in place. This seems to be the trend that makes a lot of sense. It's time to revisit this policy. It is important to be able to pivot and make changes necessary to ensure the health and safety of our children. The data shows that COVID is spreading in our schools. With the upcoming holidays, this will be likely, will likely continue to get worse. The school board's main concern should be keeping our students safe and keeping them learning in an in-person format. Masking is the best way to keep our students in this, children...
Masking is the best way to keep our students in the, children in the schools and to keep them advancing in their education. My hope is that by suspending the opt-out option, we will be able to minimize the already quickening spread through our schools and town. Even by delaying our decision, your decision to mandate masks until now has had negative consequences that will be felt for weeks to come within the schools. We are still digging out from the effects of a full year of remote learning. Students need to remain in the school buildings where they have access to our dedicated teachers and support staff. Speaking of which, those teachers and support staff all need your, the community's support and recognition, grace, and an actual pandemic bonus. Merrimack is not competitive with surrounding towns in our pay for substitutes. Please consider increasing the pay, at least during the height of teacher shortages. Our children deserve the best that we can give them. We all want to enjoy the holiday season and not be stuck quarantined because of something that could have been prevented. Please vote to suspend the opt-out option from masking. Thank you for your consideration and dedication to our community. We are grateful for your commitment and to our future generations. Caitlin Bernier.
Next up at the mic. Thank you for your patience, sir.
Hi there. Oh, no problem. Tony John Cola, Lake Road. So I've been a chiropractor in town for 22 years. I've probably seen 20 to 30% of the population here. So I talk to them on a pretty regular basis, but I'm just going to make a couple of comments, a couple of observations. The first one is, you did mention that the state of Vermont has a high infection rate. They also have the highest vaccination rate in the state and the country. So I wouldn't hang my hat on kids getting shots. But my big one is, we started the mask optional at the start of the school year, and the case rate has only gone up in the past two weeks. So what that tells me is that the masks, however we've done it, has worked for two months, almost three months, and that the increase at the elementary school could be due to anything else. So I feel like you should have kept it the same that it was. I know you guys talk about having the kids go back to school. I think the kids have to stay in school, but it's got to be good school. You know, I've heard stories from kids, you know, that I see around in town that the teachers are forever telling them, "Put your mask on. Put it up over your nose. You got to wear it here. You got to do that." And it's basically pitting kids against teachers and making teachers be police officers in the, in the school. Makes for a terrible learning environment, if you ask me. I think that was it. I think you guys are really in the weeds with this, trying to tease out teeny tiny bits of stuff. I thought you had it just about right with the mask optional for the kids that, that really think it's a good idea, and the, the kids that we didn't think it was a good idea would be fine, and it seemed to be working out. But I guess we're going to have to try something else. So thank you.
Thank you. Shannon?
Naomi Halter, 10 Everest. Oops, sorry about that. Naomi Halter, 10 Everest Drive. Dear Merrimack School Board, I've learned a lot since I started coming to school board meetings a few months ago. I've learned that there are a lot of challenges and exciting projects on the horizon for our schools, like lowering the dropout rate, streamlining our curricula, switching to standards-based reporting, and supporting our teens and families so they can better focus on their education and preparing for adulthood. We cannot accomplish any of that if we keep getting stuck on masks. We need your strong leadership to bring us through this. You must make a decision tonight that keeps as many of our kids in school as possible, even if it is unpopular. After that decision is made, you must continue to reject the guidelines for schools from the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services and allow families to opt out. You must spend some time crafting your own metrics so you don't have to have another meeting every time the COVID numbers ebb and flow. Let me be clear. Masks reduce the spread of respiratory illness, including COVID. Our community and our schools are seeing record-high numbers of COVID. This is keeping hundreds of kids out of school each day. Until we see absenteeism go back down to the levels we had in September and early October, everyone in school should be masked. Thank you, Naomi Halter.
Next up.
Hi, Michelle Karikatos, Swift Lane. So as a school counselor, I'm in the schools. I'm seeing what happens on a daily basis, not in this district. But from my experience, I'm on the radio calls. I'm dealing with a lot of behavior students, tier one, tier two, and tier three students. I spend a lot of time with tier two and three students who maybe struggle with various things like behaviors. So I mostly get calls where they're defiant, and one of the main things is masks. I've seen this impact their learning, impact other children's learning, and it's just sad. And I have to say, as we make connections, I say, "I feel the same way. I don't like the mask either." And, you know, the rule is this, and then I watch another meltdown take place. And it's horrific, and it just breaks me down, and it's breaking them down. It's impeding their learning and everybody else's. So I really, I agree with the gentleman who spoke, the chiropractor, not too long ago. Just, it, it's, the numbers have skyrocketed, and so, you know, personal theory, or theory, maybe, it's the vaccination rate. I've here heard many, many things coming out about more people are vaccinated, more people vaccinated. Well, I'm seeing, in my own research methods class, they warn against what politicians and government do with data to fit their narrative. And so I'm just curious to see with the policy that you were fighting for to really just see, once everybody has that option to vaccinate, will that really impact? Will that make a difference? So I'm curious to see that. Thank you for fighting on behalf of that. I appreciate everybody, what they're doing. But when we have masks in place, we need to think about, are we properly using them? And I see these children soiling their masks, wearing dirty, dirty masks all day long, and the moment I can, I get them a new one. Policy should be 15 to 20 minutes is when a mask is soiled, and I've said this before prior. And I know that's not being done. I try to do it personally because I see it, but I know it's not being done. So the, the concern I have with masks, and luckily, my, my children's school are fine for now, but if there is a cluster and they don't, I'm concerned for their safety because they're not getting that chance. So my question would be, and my hope would be, are they getting an opportunity to change it every 15, 20 minutes so that their health is, you know, the priority, their safety is the priority? Because my daughter has had surgery. She has adenitis, she got it taken out. She struggles to breathe. She says, "Mom, I can't breathe in a mask." I don't want her in school if she has to wear a mask, which would impact my job. And I know many, many families are going through the same thing. So I see it in the school. I see how it's impacting emotionally, socially. I see how it's impeding on children's learning all around, and I, I just hope that we can get past this and move on to other issues because there's plenty of other issues, like drug issues in the middle and high school, social, emotional. I would love funding to go to more counselors or psychologists to come in the school and help out because those are the, the needs. I want to move on past this. And hopefully, we can do that soon. People will have their option to make their choices. I would just love for us to all have our choice. Stay intact. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Leba, 6 Tumazian Drive. Dear Merrimack School Board members, thank you for all of the time and hard work you put into making our schools better. I'm writing this evening to implore you to reinstate the, the mask requirement and social distancing practices at all schools. Our number one priority is to keep our children in school so they can learn and grow. As of the past two weeks, the number of COVID cases in our schools has spiked significantly. Whole classrooms are being affected, students and educators alike. It is not only the specific classrooms, though. Families, moms, dads, brothers, and sisters are now missing out on weeks of school and work. Additionally, we all know there is a substitute teacher shortage, so having educators out with COVID is the worst-case scenario. Masks are proven to decrease the spread of the COVID virus indoors. Social distancing has been shown to decrease the spread of the COVID virus. At my child's school, social distancing is minimal at best in the classrooms. Students are seated at desks organized in clusters or at multi-person tables. That may have worked for the first couple of months of school, but now that we are indoors with windows closed, it is not working. The district proved last year, students could be at least at school and be safe from COVID. They could be in their classrooms, participate fully in their studies, and be with their peers. We need to figure out how to create that safe, healthy environment again. Merrimack's COVID case numbers in our schools are shocking and sad. At a previous meeting, a board member stated if the number of cases started to increase, changes will be made. The cases have increased significantly. It is time to make changes. I appreciate you taking the time to read my email. Thank you, Jennifer Leba. Again, hope I got your name right.
Next up at the mic.
Ashley Tenheves, Shelburne Road. I understand I'm among the minority here in this room, and I would have hoped that you guys would have looked at this mask mandate a little bit better. Working in the community, being the one to test these kids, to try and schedule these tests, there's not enough of us. There's not enough people to test. We have plenty of test kits. We don't have enough people to do this for our community. And it's really taking a toll, and it's going to keep these kids out of school longer than it would have if you had just allowed those parents of children five to 11 now, who are finally old enough to decide if they're going to get the vaccine, to be able to make that decision to do that, a month, two months. Let them have that time to be able to do that if that's what they decide for their family. Because honestly, looking at the numbers of the elementary school, the high school, the middle school, we're seeing it in our office, too. We're seeing more younger kids coming in, very, very sick, having to be tested. We're not seeing as many of the high school and middle schoolers. And honestly, I do believe that the vaccines have a part in it. It may not be everything, but it's definitely a part. It's also the fact that these older kids are not touching their masks. They're not putting their hands in their mouth. They're not sharing toys that have been in their mouth or other things like that. But I would have hoped that you guys would have given the people that wanted to be able to take that time to get their kids vaccinated, now that it's available, that time to have been able to do that. We've had this opt-out for a while, and yes, it's worked, but now kids are inside, windows are closed. It's cold and flu season. It's called cold and flu season for a reason, and we are seeing colds, stomach bugs. We are seeing flu. We saw flu a whole lot earlier this year than we did two years ago because we're out and about more. We're spending more time with other people. We're not wearing as many masks, and this makes me nervous that, you know, we're not giving the time for those parents. We allowed the parents that didn't want to wear the mask to have that option, but you're not giving that same option now to the parents that were hoping for this, to give their, give them time to do what they wanted to do to help protect their children, and I don't think that's fair. Thank you.
Joanne Grobecker, 27 Craig Drive. Dear members of the school board, my name is Joanne Grobecker, and I have two daughters, the MES. Thank you for all the time and thought you have put into ensuring all students in Merrimack receive a quality public education. I implore you to make your decision tonight with the understanding that in-person education is best for all students. Do whatever it takes to keep all students in the buildings and learning from educators in person. There were 259, 257 COVID-related absences yesterday, and only nine of them were staff members. That makes 248 students that did not receive an education yesterday. I trust the board to come to a decision that allows all students to learn in person. Respectfully, Joanne Grobecker.
Anyone else at the mic?
Rebecca Stats, 11 Bradford Drive. First off, I wanted to say to our officer here tonight, thank you. And I think you'd be very hard-pressed to find any domestic terrorists in Merrimack. I strongly feel it should be the choice of the parent and child working together to decide whether the child should be masked. I have three children in the Merrimack School District. At the moment, I had four, now three. Thank you, Mrs. Yarlet. Two of them are still at Reed's Ferry. All three of my children have special needs, and I kind of feel like I don't fit in either space here, in some ways, because my daughter, who's at the high, or is at the high school and is not, it's very complicated. She has a lot of respiratory issues, and so for her, wearing a mask is a problem, any kind of mask. We have gone through every kind of mask known to man, I think, and every kind makes her dizzy. We've, she's just getting over bronchitis. At the doctor's office, we actually were able to test with the little machine how much airflow she's getting through masks, and there was a significant difference between what she was getting in with and without a mask. So it does make a difference when you're wearing a mask and when you're not, how much oxygen intake you're getting, or at least for her, it does. So wearing a mask when she's trying to think and do things and function sincerely affects her. So for her, the decision was, when she's doing schoolwork, not wearing a mask. For my other two, it reads Ferry. Oh, no, not other two, it reads Ferry. One is the upper. My gosh, I can't even keep track of it. One, they're both autistic. They both wear masks by choice. I, personally, I would not, but they chose to, and that's something that I respect for them. That's their decision. Largely, Andrew, introduce him, two Joseph and Andrew, they both have autism. They wear their masks not because they believe it protects them, really, although perhaps Andrew does. You know why they wear them? They wear them out of fear. And you know where they learned the fear? They learned it from peers. They learned it from television. They learned it from what they see on the internet. And they learn it from school. Now I sound like Biden, sorry. They learn it at school. They learn it in the way they see the teachers behaving, the way they see their fellow students getting yelled at. "Put your mask on. Put it over your nose. It needs to be over your nose. You can't have it down here or over here." They see other kids being taken out of the room. It's fear, a lot of it, and that's not right. We want to raise our children to be critical thinkers. Isn't that the point of education? We make our, we make decisions for our children with the hope that eventually they're going to use critical thinking skills and make their own critically thought-out decisions. Having a mandate removes that critical thinking from us and from them. You're teaching them exactly the opposite of what we want to educate them for. It's completely wrong think. It tells them, "Your thoughts don't matter. It makes you anxious to wear a mask? Eh, sorry, wear it any way you have to. It makes you uncomfortable? Meh, I don't care. It makes somebody else uncomfortable that you're not wearing a mask? Put it on." You can't go into, you can't go into that store because there's somebody in there who thinks differently than you, and you need to be wearing a mask, or you don't need to be wearing a mask, and now I'm kind of crossing lines. But I'm just so fed up with all of it. It's damaging our children. We know this. We all know this, and if you look in your heads, you know this. Mandates don't work. Mandates are not enforceable. Mandates are not logical. Mandates go against the natural law of respecting the other person. You're taking their free will. That's what you really want to do to our kids? That's how you respect me as a parent? If that's how you respect me as a parent, yeah, watch those seats that you're sitting in because I don't think that's very good. But I am very upset because I do see you harbing my children. I do see the anxiety. I appreciate their choices to wear, to not. I ask you to respect everyone's choices, to wear, to not. I understand the things are climbing, the count's climbing, and I do believe that it has some- And I do believe that it has something to do with the shots. And I do believe that we're not going to see it come down. As more people are vaccinated, I believe that it's going to have something to do, and we're never going to reach that off.
Ma'am, I just need to, if you could kind of start.
I apologize.
No, I don't mean to be rude at all.
No, you're not. Thank you. I apologize for taking so long, but I am concerned we're never going to get back to having freedom. Thank you.
Craig Bellhumor, 12 Bradford Drive. Hello, my name is Craig Bellhumor. I'm unable to make the meeting this evening, but would like to voice my opinion nonetheless. I still do not feel our kids need to be masked. Nothing has changed, in my opinion, and firmly stand against a mask mandate. At least let us keep our mask-out option. Thank you, Craig Bellhumor. I hope again, I got your name right. Did I?
He's my neighbor, I know him.
Oh, good.
And do we have anyone else for the mic? What? Super quick, two seconds.
I just want to say thank you for listening again, because we're all saying the same things, basically, that we've been saying for months. But the stats are changing, so I appreciate it. And I know Lori and Lori, you really, really hate this conversation. So I really, really appreciate you guys listening and having conversation with us to get this moving forward.
Thank you. Shannon?
Okay, we have Lindsey Burns from 9 Cynthia Road. I'm asking that our schools consider a mask mandate until at least after the Christmas break. Other towns have been using sliding scale numbers of cases to determine mask usage, and I would also be in favor of this. I'm not in favor of an opt-out option any longer with these numbers and amount of times my child has been a close contact in the last few weeks. Thank you for all you do. Lindsey Burns. Sarah Hartwell, Joppa Road. Dear members of the school board, I'm writing to request you follow the recommendations of the state epidemiologist and his team, and mandate masks for all in the school buildings. Hopefully vaccination of the student body will make this a temporary measure, but it appears to be a necessary one at the moment. Thank you for your time, Sarah Hartwell. I'm on the roll, right? I can go? Go, go, go?
Is there anyone else here that wants, okay, so Nancy, if you want to go ahead and come on up? And then, is anyone else out there? Need to, one more, okay, so we'll go back to you after you. Then from there, you can just go on a roll. All right.
Hello, Nancy Murphy, 20 Brendelane. I apologize for being late, we had another meeting. But first, I want to thank all of you, because I know the last number of months have been challenging at best. And this discussion is one of those that you hear from a lot of people, very divergent views. I came and I spoke back in, I think it was the very beginning of September, maybe the end of August, when this first discussion first came up. And I then spoke in support of a mask mandate. Not because I like mandates, or that I think everybody has to follow rules, but because my background is in public health, in nursing, and primarily pediatrics. And I've worked a lot with the Department Health and Human Services over the last couple of years as a state rep. I have real concerns about back when the decision was made to allow an opt-out. And I recognize, I have special needs, I have two grandchildren with autism, and a son with autism, so I get the, I, believe me, I get all of the sensory things, and I acknowledge that there certainly have to be options and considerations for kids that just, for whatever reason, can't do it. That said, I think that we've seen over the last couple of months, an increase in transmission rate that we were hoping we weren't going to see back when that first decision was made. And it's, it's, I know, one of the other things that I was concerned about back then was when schools just getting, were opening, and we were seeing people posting, teachers were posting on the social media forums, groupings in classrooms and things like that. And I did actually mention that I was concerned about the face-to-face and the small groupings back in September, and I think that may still be an issue. And we have a lot of mitigation strategies that we can use. Hand washing, masks, spacing, social distancing. And I feel like since what we're seeing is a transmission rate that we had hoped not to see, that it is really time now to put all of those things in place. Until such time as we see a curve down. I know, it's not optimum. We all want to be over with this. And I think one of the ways to get over this is to listen to, not only the parents, we're parents and we have concerns, and we recognize our kids, but we're not all health professionals. I'm no, I have no doctorate in anything, I'm a nurse, you know? And I think there are far brighter people than I, far more educated people than I, in these, in the science of this. And they're telling us what we need to do. The CDC has told us, we have recommendations back from the task force, and Mr. Olson back a number of months ago, and we didn't listen to those at that point. Our governor has come out and said he supports masks. He thinks that masks are necessary. Where, you know, our Department Health and Human Services, Dr. Ben Chan does too. So I would hope that we sort of balance out what you hear from us as parents, and look at the health professionals who really can look at this with a little more objectively. So I, that's all I wanted to say, so thank you.
Christopher Dispress, Dispray? I know I hacked that one. 37 Berkeley Street. Good evening, Merrimack School Board and Parents. Everyone is aware of the rising number of COVID cases in our community. We can all view numbers and statistics to see that things are looking grim with our current masking standards in place. We need to remove the option to opt-out for our schools, but I will not be talking about that. Instead, I want to talk about the subject of bullying in Merrimack. We've all been told that bullies are the bigger kids who threaten to shove you in a locker or take your lunch money away from you. Those aren't the bullies I'm concerned about within our town tonight. The bullies we need to worry about tonight are the ones that stand around a crowded room during a pandemic unmasked with their hands across their chest. The kind of bully that makes you call the police before this very meeting to make sure they are present. We're told that we have to stand up to the bullies, and that's how you get them to leave you alone. I wish this was always true, but it's not. They will still be bullies after tonight's vote. You can't change that with your vote. Your vote can only do one thing, save lives. It can save a grieving family who may lose their loved ones. It can prevent a lengthy and expensive hospital stay. It can save a parent from losing their job because their children are close contacts, and half the class is now remote, and they can't take the time off of work without getting fired. Your vote can do all of those things. I ask you to ignore the bullies around us and do the right thing. Thank you.
Sabrina Beeby, Wire Road. I actually have a question that I don't want anybody to answer now. Just clarification, my husband sent me a text. On the agenda, it states that emails must be received between the start of the meeting at 7:00 P. M. He wants to know why emails are being read from two days ago. Clearly, he said it states that they're supposed to be received between the start of the meeting at 7:00 P. M. So he's just confused at that. I don't know, I didn't send an email. So clarification later on, that's great. Thank you.
Dana Knight, 17 Dollar Road. I'd like to state, wearing of masks, vaccinations, and social distancing is still the smart way to beat this pandemic, and assist our townspeople are protected from each other. Regards, Dana. Reading the room, no one else. John Grady, 8 Avonaki Circle. Me, my darling wife and I have been Merrimack residents and taxpayers for 46 years. During this time, each of us dedicated many years in Merrimack, town and school district government, and we appreciate your time and efforts. Our two daughters, now adults, received excellent educations, and we always knew that Merrimack schools kept them safe. In my 41 years as a teacher and principal in neighboring communities, I always tried to base my decisions on what was best for the kids, and I'm confident that you will do the same tonight. It is essential to keep them safe. Listen to science, listen to the medical experts. Please vote to mandate mandatory masks in our schools for staff and students. Thank you, John Grady. Angelique Lipman, 8 Owls Court. Hello, I'm writing to ask you to keep the mask mandate and remove the germal opt-out option for masks. While I am aware some classes only have a few opting out, there are several who have half the class opting out. I've been made aware that in some of these rooms with high opt-out rates, there's an increase in COVID spread and quarantines. As of today, 81 students in the Merrimack School District are positive for COVID, and another 63 are out quarantining, and 69 students are excluded awaiting testing. Therefore, a total of 213 students are currently not in school in Merrimack, according to the COVID dashboard. When looking at the daily COVID dashboard, it is showing a very alarming trend. Numbers of cases in quarantines are rapidly increasing, and something needs to be done to help mitigate the spread. When looking at surrounding districts with mask mandates with no opt-out, such as Nashville and Manchester, the rate of spread is not as high. I am a teacher in this school with a full mask mandate, and students do great with them, and they do not interfere with learning or socializing, and it helps to keep the kids where they belong, which is in school. I would also encourage other mitigation measures be put into place, such as desks all facing the same direction and spread out as much as possible, as I have heard some classrooms still have desks in groups and students facing each other. Members of this board have publicly stated that the opt-out policy could change on the dime, and that time is now. It is an emergency situation that warrants the board to take away the opt-out unless in cases with a doctor's note for those with certain needs. Please follow through with your promise to be flexible and change policy as the need dictates, which is, which it does. I also suggest creating metrics to take the guesswork out of this going forward. Other districts such as Manchester, Nashville, and even Hudson base their mask policy by rate of positive cases in their district. Perhaps Merrimack can consult with a local health expert and create a set of metrics to go off of going forward. I know that everyone is tired of this pandemic. However, just this week, I lost another person I know to COVID, and I've seen COVID symptoms in children that have led to hospitalizations. Please help to keep the students safe and remove the opt-out option for masks until the rate of infections has gone down. Thank you, Angelique Lipman. See, that was a repeat. Must make sure we got it. Okay, next is, my name is Carolyn Harold, I live at 31 Valley View Drive. I used to tell my kids that there was no screaming in the car because there was no way for those of us who didn't want to hear it to get away. We just need to be considerate of each other. It seems similar to the idea behind masks on the bus. Spacing students in class three feet or more and unmasking the classroom would be reasonable because it allows for a comfortable distance for those who are concerned. Walking in the hallways is more congested, and students have no choice but to be confined to that tight space, even if it is momentarily. So let's be considerate of those who prefer not to get sick and wear a mask in the hallways. A solution is obviously too difficult to agree upon because we have lost the idea of compromise and consideration, just wear a mask in the halls, just like on the bus. Rachel Papke, I actually didn't even need to check your phonetics on this, Rachel. Practice makes perfect. Also, Tinker Road. Dear Merrimack School Board members, I want to extend my appreciation for the work you do on, on a day-by-day basis for our school community. I appreciate the time that you all take out of your day and from your own families to support the district. I know you'll get to hear from many members of our community tonight, both from the pro or against-mask realms. Each member has their own story or reason for their stance. Each voice matters and should be heard. And all should be heard. But I ask you as a board to stay focused on the near-term priority of keeping as many kids and staff in school through the next couple of months. This will require a change in the current opt-out policy and will follow the recommendation of the superintendent and the Health and Safety Task Force. I'm sure you all understand the magnitude of your decision and how it will directly impact the numbers of students and staff that may have to be absent for an extended amount of time due to illness or quarantine. Should the board decide to keep the mask opt-out policy in place, this will put students and staff at higher risk for absences due to illness or quarantine, meaning students will continue to miss out on their school experiences. No student should be put in a position of having to be absent for an extended time, away from their educators, friends, or maybe their only meal for the day, when there are no tools or resources around us, such as masks, extra cleaning protocols, i.e. fogging at night, hand washing, and social distancing that might help support kids being in person. I urge you all tonight to make a decision that utilizes the tools that surround us to achieve the district priority of keeping as many students slash staff in the buildings for in-person learning. Thank you all again for your time. Rachel Papke, Tinker Road. Karen Mortimer, Everest Drive. Good evening, I'm writing to you tonight in full support of the recommendations to suspend the current opt-out mask policy. The board agreed that this policy would need to be reviewed and suspended if the numbers went up. The numbers are up, they are way up. Positive cases, the frequency of those close-contact emails and wait times for the PCR test results, they are all way up. I firmly believe the only way to keep the schools open through the upcoming holiday travel season is to require everyone in the building to wear a mask with no option to opt-out. I urge you all to ignore the noise, focus on the data, and vote to support Mr. Olson's recommendation this evening. Sincerely, Karen Mortimer. Lisa Martino, Shore Drive. Please end the mask mandate for all Merrimack students. If kids still want to wear them, then let them. We chose to opt-out of wearing a mask. The change from last year I see in my child is profound. We cannot take a step backwards, we must move forward. Thank you. Dawn Worsley, Coda Road. Thank you for calling this emergency meeting to address the escalating COVID transmission in town and the schools. My granddaughter attends TFS and loves it. She loves her teacher, her classmates, the administration, and the opportunities available to her. After a year and a half of computer screens, it's been a long time since I've seen her so bouncy. In fact, she recently had to take two sick days, non-COVID, and yelled at my daughter for missing school. We need to keep the schools open, everyone agrees on that. My daughter and granddaughter live with me. Last year, I had two health emergencies that have now left me vulnerable to COVID infection. My daughter and I are vaccinated, and my granddaughter received her first dose last week. We have personally taken all precautions that we can, but I unfortunately also have to depend on others' responsibility for my safety. Revoking the opt-out from asking in the schools is urgent for the safety of the entire community, especially families like mine. Regardless of this personal liberty claim being yelled about, there's a more pressing personal responsibility to keep the entire community safe. You as members of the school board have a responsibility for our children, but also to this entire town. I hope you take that seriously. Karen Brown, 15 Four Winds Road. Dear school board members, thank you for your continued service to our community through these unprecedented times. Thank you for also taking time away from your families to convene this emergency board meeting. When the mask opt-out policy was enacted earlier this year, members of this board stated that the decision would need to be revisited should the number of COVID cases increase. Based on the numerous pieces of scientific evidence, we have arrived at this crossroad. The Merrimack School District COVID tracking sheet shows COVID-related absences have been above 200 per day since November 14th. It has more than doubled in the past two weeks. Yesterday, Dr. Benjamin Chan, the epidemiologist for the state of New Hampshire, provided an update on COVID-19 in our schools. There are two pieces of information that I ask you to consider when voting on the mask policy this evening. There have been 262 identified COVID-19 clusters in New Hampshire schools since the beginning of the school year. Paraphrasing Dr. Chan, there's evidence of schools contributing to community transmission. Kids are bringing COVID-19 home to their families, some of whom are becoming sick. No matter where you stand on the issue of masks, we share one common ground. It is in the best interest of all children to remain in school. I'm asking that you vote tonight to enact a temporary policy of universal masking in our schools. A short-term measure to stop the community's spread that is occurring in Merrimack and throughout schools in our state. The surge is here. We need to act with leadership to ensure our children experience as little disruption as possible. Respectfully, Karen Brown. Donna Daly. Donna Daly, you did not give me your address, I cannot read your comment. I'm very sorry, I did not see that earlier because it came, there's been a lot tonight. It's been a lot. Matt Clement, 65 Patton Road. Dear school board members, first of all, first I will say that I am disappointed that you didn't act swiftly, I think the term was, on the dime last week when you assure parents that you would, if things changed with COVID. They clearly changed the past week or two with numbers climbing to their highest level. With Mr. Everett's recommendation to do mandatory masks, it should have been voted for and approved last meeting, but was not because of a seizure snafu, and I suspect fear of backlash from the mask opposers, who didn't bother to show up at the last meeting, as they have done for every meeting. It was pretty rare that I heard nearly no objection to masks at the last meeting, likely because everyone is aware of the numbers. I also heard about the committee's recommendation for 5% of the population to have COVID before mandatory requiring masks. I must say that is absolutely absurd to allow 5% of the entire population of the district to be sick before doing what should have been done from day one. We know better, and the proof is easy to find by simply looking at Nashville or Manchester numbers versus our numbers for such a smaller student population. I strongly encourage you, or I strongly urge you to do what the parents are of, the parents are majority asking and make masks mandatory for all students except those very rare medical exceptions, which doesn't include parents that simply feel their freedom is being hurt. Keep the kids in school, and the best way to do that is masks and vaccination. Matt Clement. Brian Townsend, 5 Mary Meeting Drive. Dear school board members, we are writing to urge you to adopt a mandatory mask policy, at least with respect to all Merrimack elementary schools. There are 175 active COVID-19 cases in Merrimack, and according to Merrimack School District's COVID dashboard, a total of 94 student cases at this time. That means 54% of all active cases of COVID-19 in Merrimack are in our schools. Nashville and Manchester are states' two largest cities by population. Each have fewer total cases in their schools than we do in ours. Nashville schools' COVID cases make up only 9% of the city's total cases, 44 out of 505. Manchester's schools' COVID-19 cases make up 15% of total cases, 86 out of 575. Our schools make up an alarming 54% of the total active cases in all of Merrimack. The clear distance difference, other than outrageously lower number of cases, is much more crowded schools, is that masks are mandatory. In other words, masks are working. We, we're very disappointed to read the Health and Safety Task Force's recommendations this evening. Masks should be mandatory now. We should not be waiting for all schools to get to five percent, allowing this virus to continue to spread. It's irresponsible and unfair to our children. Masks should be mandatory for all until COVID-nineteen cases in our schools and community decrease. Kind regards, Brian Townsend. Christine Reedy. And, let's make sure, Haynes Terrace. Hi, my name is Christine Hemmenway and I reside on Haynes Terrace. I have three kids that go to TFS, one in first grade and two in preschool. I want to thank all the educators and staff for their hard work during these ongoing uncertain times. I write you tonight in complete disgust of what is happening here in our district. We are failing. When the board met on Monday and Mr. Olson presented his recommendation on masking, this board chose to vote it down due to transparency to the one-third of anti-maskers in this town. As a result, you risk children's health and safety for a few days longer. So the town is aware there's going to be a vote on masking. I'm not sure I see the logic here. What I see is the board catering to keeping people happy over fact-based scientific data. I also see us teaching our kids that we don't need to make health decisions based on facts. Ooh, sorry. If the science isn't relevant in your decision-making process, what is? Since the start of school, my three kids have had a total of eight COVID tests combined due to the colds and needing a test to go back to school. I appreciate the process and I'm all for testing to be sure that we are not getting people sick. I feel the school should be doing more with testing. Optional weekly testing would be a good way to show that we are all doing our part to minimize the spread. It is also becoming increasingly hard to get a rapid COVID test, only keeping children from learning that much longer. I received a close contact letter and it was, I was, and was told by a school nurse, if it is the only one you received, you should be fine. Then went on to share her personal experiences minimizing the situation. TFS is the highest cases in the district. It is disheartening and very concerning to hear the lack of concern over this, as if it is just no big deal. We have lost sight of what we know works, enforcing everything back to normal. Nothing about kids needing eight COVID tests in two months is normal, nothing at all. More can and needs to be done to mitigate cases in our schools. When I visited the students' class, all desks were facing inward. My daughter came home from school one day this week with a headache because there, there were kids screaming in the lunchroom for the entire lunch period at the top of their lungs, all while not wearing, all while not wearing a mask because they were having lunch. Nothing was done. The student was simply told they could not be first in line when the lunch ended. Based on the numbers at TFS, I find all this unacceptable and concerning. As adults and some kids I know, we know what will minimize the spread based on data slash science. So I have to ask why this board is more focused on making sure parents are happy. The goal should be children are safe when they attend school. I've heard over and over, we are in this together. Everything I see as a parent in this community is showing the exact opposite. We can and need to do better than we are right now for our children whom we should be protecting. Thank you for your time. Respectfully, Christine Hemmenway. Alan Beebe, Wire Road. I would like to briefly discuss my experience with masks this school year as it relates to tonight's agenda item. At the beginning of the school year, my wife and I informed our child's school that we made a decision that our child would not wear a mask or face shield anywhere and at any time. This includes in classrooms as well as hallways. Only one time since the first day of school has my child worn a mask and that was because a staff member put one on my child. The school quickly realized the mistake they made, we received an apology and it has not happened again. I appreciate that. I want to be perfectly clear. We were not granted an exemption or exception, nor did the school district make a decision to allow our child to not wear a mask. We as parents made the decision for our child and the school district had no choice other than to honor our decision. I thank them for that. I think this community is under the impression that the school district has the authority to require masks. That is simply false and my wife and I have shown. Perhaps the school board should address the public and clarify that a mandate is not what is being voted on. What is being voted on is nothing more than a suggestion that parents make the decision to have their children wear masks. Feel free to discuss this while, feel free to discuss why my child hasn't worn a mask all year. Thank you for your time. Heather Callahan, Five King Henry Court. Hi, plenty of well-informed parents in Merrimack believe masks on our children cause harm physically, socially and emotionally and that they do more harm than good. Studies show that using masks in the school setting does not reduce transmission of COVID-nineteen and so many countries in Europe and around the world have stopped recommending them, recommending their use for children. A few weeks ago Bill Olson said that going forward, he would not be making any recommendations for a stricter mask policy. Nothing has changed to warrant him going back on his word. Please take a stand for medical freedom and parental rights. Heather Callahan. Laura Millar, Essex Green Court. Hello, I'm a teacher in the school district of Nashua. I find it very telling that the reported positive cases in my work city of Nashua and my residence of Merrimack have been very similar within the last few weeks. Despite having one-third the number of students, Merrimack is seeing very similar numbers to the students in Nashua. Nashua is observing masking by policies within its schools. If Nashua is able to keep the numbers tied to a district one-third the size, clearly masks are working. I encourage Merrimack to consider implementing mandatory masking as COVID numbers continue to surge and will continue through the winter. Laura Millar. Taryn Swenson, Eight Thirty-eight Marty Drive. I sincerely hope this meeting is for you to remove the mask mandate altogether and get back to focusing on the quality of education you are providing this community instead of how to keep them masked two years later. It's time to admit that the doctors and epidemiologists don't know how to stop COVID and we've reached the point of insanity to continue to do the same thing. The masks and vaccines aren't stopping at all. Ever think that making the kids wear masks is also making them more vulnerable to catching COVID? There are three times as many cases than this time last year with sixty-four percent of the state fully vaccinated. Time to switch up the approach and take the masks off. Our kids are going to get sick. The sooner parents in school board accept it, the better. My kids had it in March and they may get it again. I will not live in fear of an illness that they have a zero percent chance of becoming seriously ill or dying. I'm glad that my kids have a natural antibodies test, in parentheses, tested. I'm actually terrified of what's in that vaccine and growing on the masks, growing on the masks. I'd like to see the data that the only kids affected by the case increases are those unvaccinated and unmasked. We will no longer subject our children to this abuse. We settled on wearing them when outside of the classroom and that is where we firmly stand until the mandate is removed. Taryn Swenson. Jennifer McInnis, Eight Evergreen Drive. Good evening, I'm reaching out to express my support for your universal masking policy in the district for the duration of the current wave of COVID transmission in the schools and the community. The CDC has found that masking reduced outbreaks in school and recent meta-analysis of global research is being reported on today. And The Guardian shows that masking to be the most effective non-pharmaceutical intervention in reducing COVID spread. Thank you for your time, Jennifer McInnis. I do not see an address and I was practicing the last name and I still didn't see an address. Okay, so I will send those two people emails after this meeting because I'm on a roll to get them for the next meeting. So Bonnie Dunham, Sixteen Run Court. Dear Merrimack School Board, as COVID numbers continue to increase, we are no longer talking about a potential threat to our children's health and safety. The threat isn't even imminent. It is here now and now is when we have to come together as a community to do whatever is necessary to protect our children and staff. Please implement a mask mandate in our schools until the data demonstrates that the crisis has passed. I appreciate that you are facing extreme pressure from people who don't want their children to have, to wear masks. But many vulnerable children need universal masking to be safe. You should always carry more weight than wants or don't wants. Thank you in advance, Bonnie Dunham. Jenna Lee Brown, Ten Danbury Drive. I will keep this very simple because I cannot believe we continue to have this conversation. I have two young children in the school system and we have opted out of masks. One, masking my children is not, or not, masking my children or not is my choice, not yours. Two, parents who are concerned can get their children vaccinated. Three, masks for young children are not sanitary, they suck on them, they touch them, they drop them on the floor, it's gross. Four, psychologically for children, masking in school does not make sense. Children do not need to wear masks anywhere else, not stores, not amusement parks, not friends' houses, not sports outside of school such as dance, gymnastics, karate, et cetera. They don't understand why the school is forcing them to do this. Let's talk about important things like how we can get all the kids up to speed who are behind because of this mess over the last few years. Let parents make their own medical decisions for their children. Thank you. Nicole Arp, Three Twenty-nine Daniel Webster Highway. Hello, my name is Nicole Arp. I would like to thank the school board for all you do for our community. I know it's not easy and there are a lot of opinions out there, especially concerning masking our children in school. I have some concerns about your consideration in eliminating the mask opt, mask opt-out option for parents. I feel like the opt-out is an okay compromise to appease everyone about mask wearing. However, I believe that the only ones that should be masking, making the decision should be the students' parents. A mask is a medical device and parents should be able to decide if their child requires wearing one. It specifically says on the box of masks that they will not provide any protection against COVID-nineteen or other viruses. Masks are known to harbor harmful bacteria, other viruses and cause headaches, difficulty breathing, skin irritation and impair cognition. COVID-nineteen is never going away and is over ninety-nine percent survivable. People that are vaccinated or unvaccinated can spread and contract the virus. Why are we trying to stop a virus that cannot be stopped? We need to consider how masks are negatively affecting our children's learning environment and that they may be more detrimental than helpful. Kids, will kids recover from the loss of social experiences, lack of in-classroom structure and inconsistent academic curriculum? Masks are hindering children's social and emotional development, especially younger children in elementary school. Interacting with adults and peers in this early time of their lives is so important. It sets the foundation of reading emotions and social interaction for the rest of their lives. Everyone wearing masks makes it difficult for them to see other people's expressions, learn from them, discern their emotions and distinguish one face from another. All the restrictions and arbitrary rules in place to try to prevent COVID are not working because you cannot stop a virus. Kids that have the opt-out are told to wear a mask in music class while singing and are allowed to remove it when they are done. Does singing spread COVID more than just talking or breathing? Fourth graders playing the recorder in class were given a special, quote, "special" mask that had a hole in it so they could be wearing a mask but also able to play the recorder. Does blowing through a recorder somehow make COVID disappear? You can't wear a mask while you eat or drink. Does COVID not exist in the lunchroom or in classrooms during snack? I truly believe that from the time students arrive at school until dismissal, that masking should be at the discretion of parents, not the school board. You cannot, you can't possibly choose one masking procedure that is best for every single student in the district. Everyone has different needs and making one medical decision by enforcing masks will affect everyone differently. Parents should be in control of their own children's health and decide if wearing a mask is what's best for them. There is no one-size-fits-all solution regarding masking students. COVID-nineteen is never going away and everyone is at risk for contracting or spreading the virus regardless of mask use or vaccination status. It is very concerning that you are considering taking away the parents' right to decide what's best for their own children. Keeping the mask opt-out option allows parents to make medical decisions for their own children, giving them the opportunity to make changes to their decision as needed and eliminate the accountability of the school board dictating what they think is best for each student. Everyone has their own opinion, however, no one knows a child better than their parents. I believe each parent deserves the right to choose if their child should wear a mask at school. The mask opt-out should never be eliminated, but rather it should be rewritten to allow parents full discretion on masking their children, eliminate special masking situations in hallways while singing and other arbitrary rules and allow parents to decide if their child should wear a mask the entire day of school or let kids be kids. Thank you for your time. It's the last one. Okay. Michael Druin, you get the last word. So Michael Druin, Five Vanderbilt Drive. Hi, my name is Michael Druin, I'm a substitute teacher and I enjoy it. Like you said, there's a severe shortage of subs. I'd like you to consider waiving the four-day-per-week limit. I do sometimes have five days a week to be a sub. I, also to raise the number of subs, might I suggest a reward program of sorts? One example being thirty workdays, get a bonus or raise the pay for all subs to a hundred fifty dollars. And that is all she wrote.
And last call for, for the microphone? All right. Yeah, and a special thank you to Shannon for getting us through and navigating all those emails and reading to us. That was a lot and we certainly appreciate everyone who wrote in to share their opinions. Before we adjourn, I just wanted, Bill is just going to make a quick announcement.
Yes, I just want to announce that there will be a vaccination clinic for children ages five and older and teens this Saturday, November twentieth, at the Elm Street Middle School on one seventeen Elm Street in Nashua. That will be between nine A M. and four P M. If you look at the, I believe it's the Nashua Department of Public Health site, you'll find some information. The second dose of the vaccine is scheduled for December eleventh. So this Saturday, November twentieth, nine to four P M. Is a vaccination clinic for children, one seventeen Elm Street, the Elm Street Middle School in Nashua.
Thank you. And before we adjourn, I just wanted, again, to thank everyone for coming out and most importantly, to really recognize so many things that we have to be thankful for this time of year. And certainly with Thanksgiving next week, I just wanted to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving and just hope you have a nice holiday. So I'll entertain a motion to go into non-public session per RSA ninety-one dash A, colon, three, Roman numeral two, A, B and C, made by Jenna, seconded by Lori Rothouse. Lori Peters, how do you vote?
In favor.
Jenna?
In favor.
Shannon?
In favor.
Lori Rothouse? In favor? And I vote in favor. That's five zero zero. Thank you and good night.